Okay, thank you everybody for your patience. We're going to call this meeting to order. We can rise for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, can you call the roll?
Ms. Albright.
Here.
Mrs. Bell.
Here.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Here.
Mr. Jarrett.
Here.
Mrs. Leoni.
Here.
Mrs. Olson.
Here.
Mr. Scott, here. Mrs. Strobel.
Here.
Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
They're all present.
Okay, um, Scott, here. This superintendent's report that I was just about to skip over, I'm sorry. Dr. Cooper.
Thank you, Madam President. I only have one item this evening, and it's regarding an individual that is in the audience with us this evening that's being recommended by district administration for board action this evening. It's on the voting meeting. Janet, it'll serve as our high school assistant principal alongside of our current assistant principal, Mr. Sciboria. He'll be replacing Mr. Thomas Miller. So that item is on the agenda, and if the pending approval and his action item is approved, we will welcome him at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Dr. Cooper? Okay, now for the procedures for public participation. Any prepared statements that are to be read to the board should have a copy presented to the board president prior to their being addressed. Comments on agenda items will be made by rising and approaching the microphone and stating your name and address and signing in on the sheet provided. You'll be granted up to three minutes to address the board. Your three-minute time limit will start when you begin to speak. When three minutes are over, you'll be asked to be seated. Any item that is not on the agenda as well as agenda items acted upon, comments can be made at the designated section at the end of the agenda. Right, normally, I would ask for presentations by the public on agenda items. However, I do have some agenda edits, and I'd like to get them on the agenda before we have time for public time. So, agenda edits. Under 2A, 1, 1 and 2. Do I have a motion for those? Mr. Strobel, do I have a second? Mr. Jarrett, okay. So that would be to remove item 5A, 312, personnel consent item for Justin Hayne at the middle school. So we're going to be removing, we're going to be voting to remove that item from today's agenda and to add item 7A, 32, Amy Martin as school board recording secretary effective July 1 at her current hourly rate. So, does anybody have any questions before we vote on whether we can add that to the agenda?
So, I just want to make sure I got it right, 2A, 1 and 2?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, 2A, 1, 1 and 2. Those, 2A, 1, 1 and 2. Okay? Any questions before we vote on adding that to the agenda? Can we get a vote?
Sure. Mrs. Albright.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett.
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni.
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mrs. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Somebody, oh, was there not?
Nine yeses.
Okay.
Sorry.
And then I will just make the announcement, since we're here. There will be an executive session following this meeting to discuss safety and security, and there was an executive session prior to this meeting today to discuss potential litigation. And now, that our agenda stands the way it's supposed to be, can I have presentations by the public on any agenda items, if anyone would like to do that? You're seeing none? Moving into consent items. Okay, consent items 3A, 1 through 16. Do I have a motion for those? Ms. Bell, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Godfrey, do we want to have discussion, any comments, questions, concerns, before we have a vote? It's all the stuff we discussed at the last meeting. So, Mr. Scott, can we get a vote?
Mrs. Albright.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett.
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni.
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Olson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Okay, next one's the budget. So, how about if we have, let's try to have a vote for 4A, 1 through 5? Can I get a motion for that? Ms. Bell, can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Jarrett. So, that's the general fund budget, it's 66.4 million and some change? Any, anybody, you've had the budget outlay for the weekend. Anybody have any comments, questions, concerns about, this is just expectations of funds outlaid? Anybody have any concerns to talk about that? Can I get a vote?
Mrs. Albright.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett.
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni.
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
And Ms. Olson.
Yes. Sorry. All right, so, all right, so moving on to 4A, 6. Can I get a motion for that with the TBDs still in place, and then we will revise the motion after discussion? So can I get a motion for that? Ms. Godfrey, can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Jarrett. Okay. So, we just had the finance committee meeting to discuss millage. So, last year, our millage was 32.384. The tool that you were all sent gave you the opportunity to see what it would look like with any kind of increase or no increase, to how that would impact the budget. The, our CFO has recommended a .25 mil increase, which would bring us to 32.854. Is this the number I just wrote down? It is. It's the number I just wrote down.
I just looked at last year's 32.84.
32.384 is what I have written.
Okay.
Yeah, and then 32.634 would be what it would be if we went with a .25 mil increase. At the committee, you know, we had, some of us felt that that was fine, but it wasn't unanimous, so we didn't recommend anything out of committee. Because now I'm going to throw that out to, no, I'm going to start with you. Just because we're going to move around, we're going to move around the table. Your thoughts on millage for next year?
So, so I think we need to be a number that is going to support, not projecting our citizens. We don't have great shortfalls for the future. I think we at least need to put a little more space with what we're projecting to spend first of all.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
So, I thought that number was the .77 number, is that what that was?
.77 percent increase, which is the 32.634 mil.
That's the break even number.
That's our break even number, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And that would be a .77 percent increase over last year. Okay? We're just going around the table, sorry.
Okay. So, I guess I'm struggling a bit. I looked at my budget for the last year, my salary, my husband's salary. We've cut stuff for our house because our food prices have gone up, our gas prices have gone up. We've cut things because we can't just add extra income. Do you get what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
And so, I wish we could look at more specifics of the budget to be able to do that here at the district and figure out how we can keep it. I mean, there are other districts in Berks County that keep it at zero, and they make it work, and they have the same education we do. They have, it's, I just wish we could figure out a way to do that. Because I don't, you know, last year, we put a lot onto our community.
No, no lie, that is true. We did, we did a large increase last year.
And so, looking back at how much we did put onto the community, I don't see why we need to put even more now back. So that's my personal opinion.
Okay. We'll have some back and forth once we get around the table. This is where I wanted to start.
I think I'll, you know, last meeting, I'm around the 50, the .77, I'm at .50 is where I wanted to go.
Okay.
It's $32 versus 50. I don't think the ask is too difficult considering what we've gone through in previous years. We've gone through four, or five, or six years where we've had zero increases, and we know what that does to our, to the board members that are left forwarding that back.
Yeah.
If the board members decide that they aren't going to do anything forever, and just dump it back, and the school comes back and they started cutting things because there was nowhere else to go, there was no increases. So, I'm not a zero increase type person. I think there's opportunity for us to always find a couple hundred somewhere. I just believe that in my heart, you know, there's always a way to tighten it down, so leave it without really chopping anything. So, I'm in that .50 range, just $32.
For percentage, which would be 32.?
32.546 is kind of where my head was going.
546, okay.
But again.
Okay. Which would be, which would be?
50%. .50.
.50, okay. Mr. Scott?
So, I totally, I get what Mrs. Leoni's saying all day long, but some of us were on this board after the last board that came through here, Ben and I, and I guess Julia and Erin and I were here. Like, nobody raised taxes for all those years, and if they had just done small increments during that time, it would have saved us from how to, and it affects us too, but it affects the community. So, I'm in favor of the .25.
I'm going to go last. Ms. Albright.
Oddly enough, I agree with Kevin.
Okay.
I would.
I say the same thing sometimes, it's fine.
It's a first for everything. I think, you know, none of us need to sit here and, tell each other that we don't get up every day if something else has gone up and it's annoying and it's out of control and it's not getting any better. And I don't want to be that one other thing when someone else wakes up tomorrow that, you know, they have to find another $50, and it might not mean a lot to you, but it all adds up, it's a huge deal. So, and that being said, I also don't want to see programs cut, so I will err on the low side and go with Kevin with a .5, not mils, .5%.
Percent, right. That would be, I worked out, it looks like it'd be .162 increase millage wise?
Yeah.
On you.
I'm going to agree with Kevin, so.
What?
I think a small increment rather than a large increase all at once is fair. I think if we run it zero, we end up with a larger increase down low, which would be, but the problem is the increasing prices in fuel costs, etc., and all of our costs, prices, really, price progression, all washed down as well. So, we have to be able to counter that, and to accommodate that into a situation where we don't have to cut the programs. So, I think although that is fair.
Just, um, just.
Ms. Godfrey?
Don't get used to it.
You should get a lottery ticket on your way home, Mr. Strobel.
What do you guys give me the number?
I think, you know, a little more would be really a mess for somebody else.
No, I know.
A mess, you know, because all you risk.
What's your thoughts?
Well, my problem is with the housing laws, and I, I got to see a lot of seniors who's been, uh, needs are being taken care of. And I think that's what people do, and I think it's going to happen, but I agree, everything's, I agree with Kevin.
Well, I came into the meeting thinking that .25 would be, would be appropriate, but I'm having, I'm having trouble with zero. Part of the reason that we've had such a high increase last year, I mean, I understand that it works out to somewhat the same thing, but one of the reasons we had such a high increase last year is because the year before, we had zero, we had no increase because we were in the middle of COVID, and a lot of people didn't know if they were going to be able to get unemployment at that point, you know, like, it was just a very serious situation for a lot of our neighbors and a lot of our families, and so we didn't think at that time we could do that. And we didn't, we didn't 100% match up, you know, what the needs of the district were financially with what we were going to do as far as what the millage was going to be. And right now, we're really trying to match those up. So, I would, I still, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind if it were .25, to make it so that we are keeping, we were keeping pace with our expenditures. However, I totally understand the desire to keep it as low as possible. So, all right, so, anybody want to make a motion for any specific millage? And if you don't, I will. But, okay?
I'd like to make a motion, that would be .5.
No, we got it, we need a number. We need a 32.
1.6, 32.546.
32.54, to fill those numbers with, 32.546. And what is the, what is the amount per thousand on that? It's 30?
32.
32.
32,000, $32.
32.45? No. Is it 255? Is it 32.55, or?
It was on 200,000.
It was on 200,000.
No, I'm, it's, I'm reading what's in the.
Read per thousand.
It's, it's, in the agenda item, it's written per thousand. So, is it 32.55 then? Okay, so then, those would be 32.56, 546. The next to be determined would be 32.55, and the anticipated revenue from tax will be approximately?
20.
I just need those numbers to know what they are before we vote.
180,000, 690.
What is it?
Yeah, 180, 690.
180, 699. Does that sound like enough?
It is.
Oh, and then, then three zeros after that?
180, 690.
It says the amount of anticipated revenue from the tax, that sounds like really low to have it be 100 and change.
I mean, you want the entire tax.
I'm just saying, that's the way it's written here. It's written, "The amount of anticipated tax revenue from the tax, not from the tax increase."
Okay, the actual revenue is? 35,000, 005, 796.
So, Mr. Strobel, you're amending the original motion to read the rate of 32.546 mils, and that the millage rate shall be equivalent to $32.55 on each $1,000 of assessed value, and the anticipated revenue from tax will be approximately $35,5796. Is that correct? Are you okay with, is that okay to make that?
I want to understand the 35, that's the total?
Yeah.
That's not the additional?
Correct. That's not the way it's written in the, yeah, yeah, and so, so that would be the whole amount of tax that we would be taking in. Are you okay with that motion as amended?
I am.
Anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
Ms. Bell, do we want to have any further discussion? Get a vote?
Okay, so make, just to make sure that it's clear.
Okay, the numbers.
So, I got 32.546, you know, like, we're amending.
And then 32, $32.55. There's three, there's three to be determines in there.
So, I'm going to amend?
Mm-hmm. With 32.546 is the first number. The second number is $32.55. And then the third number is 35,005? I'm getting, so, I have, is, is it?
35,000, 005, 796.
7, 796?
That's, okay, that's what I said, 35,5796. And that is what Mr. Strobel gave the first amendment to that motion, and Ms. Bell seconded it.
Now, I want, I want clarity from Kathleen. I want it back to how we, you, what we did discuss, of how it was discussed in finance on a $200,000 assessment. That's the number I want. I don't want those numbers. I want to know what it's going to cost, everybody.
200, $200,000 assessed home?
How much?
$32.
$32 a year?
55 cents.
When a house is valued at $200,000.
What?
$200,000.
On a $200,000 house is $32 a year.
Has a $32 increase per year based on the business.
What do you think, higher, it's $50?
Was, was $50.
Was $50.
Okay, any other, any other questions? Go ahead. Yeah, that's, we're in that point.
We all understand, everybody does, I'm sure. Everybody's.
Is your microphone on?
Everybody's home increases are going, everybody's, everybody's getting increases at home, and the school's getting increases. And the school's got nowhere else to go for the money. So, they've been, we've been making cuts all along, every year, we've been making adjustments. The huge increase we had last year was because we took nothing for COVID. We did zero that year, and it really impacted the stuff, everything, so.
But Kevin, if you take last year's and you divide that by three, it's, do you understand, like, it's still, it kind of makes up for the zeros. Because if you took, if you took, okay, say, .16, right, and you took that over three years, last year's was still more than doing the small incremental increase.
Because, and that's because when you.
It's your couple year.
The, when you, when you, when you delay taking an increase, if you have zero increase one year, and then you, and then you try to make up for it the following year, you've lost that.
You compounded.
Yeah, you've lost that revenue for that one year.
The other thing too is, is that, you know, we're still trying to make up for, like you were saying, five, six, eight years ago, where they just zeroed forever. It's just, it makes me challenge. I mean, we've got, we're not there now, and a lot of really great things happened, I think, with the budget. This is a very modest increase for a year that, things are skyrocketing out of control, and we're still maintaining a very, very modest increase in taxes here. So, I think it's a testimony to the hard work of the administration, the board, trying to keep things as low as possible when everything around us is going up. So, that's what my, my view is.
Any more comments or questions before we have a vote? Mr. Scott?
Who did the motions on it?
Mr. Strobel. And Ms. Bell.
All right, Mrs. Albright.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett.
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni.
No.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Eight yeses, one down.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Scott. All right, moving on to personnel consent. Yes, 5A, 1 through 3 as amended. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make it.
Mr. Strobel, can I get a second? Ms. Thompson. Any comments, questions, concerns under personnel? The one amendment is to remove the 312 as discussed at the top of the meeting. Any questions, concerns? Mr. Scott, can we get a vote?
Sure. Mrs. Albright.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett.
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni.
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
And Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Okay, moving on to finance added consent, 6A, 1. No motion for that?
Motion.
Ms. Bell, have a second?
Second.
Second. So, when we last left our heroes last week, we had a finance committee, I'm sorry, facilities committee meeting, and we did not have enough people at that meeting to have a recommendation on our landscaping to come out of the meeting. The recommendation of the administration is that we go with Halter. It's over three years, a little bit more than $11,000 more than the next, next bid, which was from Edwards. They, there is an addition where Halter does rent space from us, but that's not included in that amount I just gave you. Those numbers were provided to you at the beginning of that meeting. The administration's feelings were that for a difference of $11,000, that it didn't make sense to move on to a new company for such a small amount, which was like 1.36% higher than the next bid.
Over three years.
Any, what? Over three years. Discussions, comments, questions, concerns on that?
Is that $11,000, is that with or without Edwards?
Is, I apologize. I'm having trouble hearing you.
The $1,000 is out with or without Edwards?
With that. So, that's not including the. So that's not including the, any rental agreements that they would have to have for it, otherwise.
What's that bring it down to now? Seventeen and some change.
Seventeen and some change, less, over three years. Yeah. Any other comments, questions, concerns?
I have a question.
Um, this, this is, there is no comment period until the end of this? No, that's okay. So if we have no, no comments, questions, concerns, we'll go ahead and vote?
Mrs. Olbray?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Okay. Moving on to personnel added consent. Seven A, one through four, as amended. Any motion?
Can we separate that one from the three?
Oh, I apologize, which one are we getting rid of?
I just wanted to vote on the motions over the Act Number Three separately from the other ones.
Okay, so, so if we could get, okay, so we can get a motion for seven A, one through three? As amended. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. This is for new, updated appointments, resignations, leaves. Any comments, questions, concerns on that before we vote? Can I get a vote, Mr. Scott?
This is Olbray. Sorry about that.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
And Miss Olson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Except that my mic's on. Okay.
If I could say something, Madam President, with that board action, you approved Mr. Jeffrey Berger, who's located in the back of the room, as our next assistant principal at the high school, joining Mrs. Cabori and Principal Spores. We would like to welcome him to our laser learning community, and are excited to have him as part of our team. But welcome.
Welcome aboard. I'm sure he loves having, having that voted on the same day as we go with the budget. So, um, so seven A, four, can I get a motion for that? Mr. Strobel, and I, I will second. Were there any comments, questions, concerns? Can we get a vote?
Mrs. Olbray?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
No.
Mrs. Leoni?
No.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
And Miss Olson?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
All right, under program added consent. Eight A, one. Can I get a motion for that? Mr. Strobel, can I get a second?
I'll make it.
Mr. Scott. So let me just say, this, this safety plan, we need to have one. You know, we will probably be looking at it and updating it again before school starts. But this is where we are right now, the way it stands. Mr. Hurley, has anything changed?
Just some basic, nothing of major substance, just some basic learning. Like in the first one, it just says, for example, mask wearing, it says, or master optional procedures to have, parents in practice, it doesn't change a thing, just the terminology was changed there. But in, in actual substance, nothing of significance has changed.
And do we know, are we still going to have to have this extensive a health and safety plan at the beginning of the school year? Is that what PDE is saying that's going to be happening? I'm, I'm asking because I don't know.
Now, we're required every six months to review the health and safety plan and get it pre-approved as per the FSR guidelines.
Okay.
And June, and June was our month to make that adjustment.
Okay. Any comments, questions, concerns on the health and safety plan? I've already had at least one member ask if we can have another more extensive conversation about that health and safety plan before school goes into effect, and I said that is fine.
Well, I'd like to pipe in here now.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I am excited to announce that my district just told us that we're going back to getting all of our stuff back, and our kids aren't separated anymore, and we can have our carpets back.
Will you want carpets?
No, our carpets were taken away, I did my carpet back, and I can also put my desk anywhere I want.
That's nice. So, so we will be having another conversation to be continued, but this, it, we need, we need to have one in place, so that's, that's, and Mr. Hurley has put time into updating it to match more the way things were when classes ended at the end of the year, so. Any comments, questions, concerns about that as it stands? Any vote?
Mrs. Olbray?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
And Miss Olson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Old business. Nine A, one. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make it.
Mr. Scott, can I get a second?
Here is Mr. Scott Brady.
Okay. All right. All right. So we, so any comments, questions, concerns on the, the meeting minutes? All right. Can I get a vote?
Sure. Mrs. Olbray?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett? Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
And Miss Olson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Okay, got nothing under any business? Okay, time for presentations by the public.
Now, regarding family, I sent you guys a lady of the morning, it's more of a holiday, it's not a one. But I really would like you guys to read through it. It's a recommended policy. I've been doing, along with the parents, kind of did some real extensive research on what we could, could adopt in the school district that could potentially help any future issues among students. And I just was handing him with something I'm sure today. And in my research, I actually reached out to a teacher when I was eighteen, I absolutely loved her. And so I said, what did we do? That was so different, that why, why did we all get along, we worked from all different countries, all nationalities? What did we do? Is there a policy? Is there something? And she said, there wasn't any policy that I could recall, her name was Mary P. Sutern, other than your standard student guide. The issue of racism wasn't addressed because reality of the fact is you, you students, and your parents taught you to respect one another. No policy can be instituted to instruct or enforce a genuine respect, appreciation, and love of classmate. It is something you guys lived. You came to us at the end of your formative years, having lived with one another for twelve years. Alan Altabod, who was the superintendent of our district, pointed out to me that while sometimes kids would break open to groups at lunch, it was sports, drama, and choir that brought kids together. Two kids running on the track, one whose dad worked on Wall Street, the other's dad know that guy's going, so what? They were a team. Perhaps supporting, sustaining, and creating activities that bring the groups to work together is a start. Perhaps if you're self-comedian example, my parents that are different from you and say, ladies, gentlemen, want to work on the school committee together, how about a bake sale, set a goal, make a flagpole, something to bring you guys together, and be the best you, you're awesome. She said, don't get discouraged, as Mother Truce would say, I'm just a pencil, God is the writer. That community, and God believed you, and through you was made not just from that moment, but as you can see from this moment, your eyes have seen a different way, a better way. It's not normal to be all separate in separate groups all the time. I'm sure there's others who are quietly feeling the same as you are, perhaps unaware that people are set in this situation and want a better experience for their child. So in my recommendation, and in my PowerPoint, I have listed some possible alternatives that we can do implement within the school district, including a parent committee, including some community folks to join in and participate in the education of our children. I really wish you guys would take into consideration what I'm recommending. I think you can really do so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Caroline DeCray, Dobbysville. Two news letter for Daniel Moon, footwork by month with three videos, like basically fifteen minutes of repetitive language brainwashing. There's also four and a half pages of loss returns for everyone as well. Not one word was said about Flag Day, D-Day, Father's Day. I think we do better than that. Maybe give the military a month. I really don't care where, how you identify, as long as you're happy with yourself inside. You can have a club at school, but I don't want this father commitment in the curriculum. This school is no business about getting my children, their sexual preferences, and my parents. This is a family issue, not a school and state issue. They're changing the way we choose, a one percent of the country. It's not right. We need to focus on reading, math, and science. Our test scores are horrible, we're failing our kids. I sit here and told you a couple block schedules not working, students have four classes a day, and they have two or more teachers out there, they sit for hours and watch TV and play on their phones. They do nothing productive. And most, we're going to face the same schedule next year. We need to throw out this SCL, this R T, and return teaching skills kids need. We can take time with the kids, but we have teachers out there, teach them how to balance a checkbook, create a household budget, how to cook at dinner, these basic knife skills, how to change a tire, check tire pressure, change the oil, change the battery. There's so many things that they can do and be taught. And these can be taught without any pressure or tests. Just introduce them to these things, they have basic knowledge, one state of care. We don't have anything to lose with that type of stuff. And they can be taught by community members who are retired, parents who have time to volunteer, even local businesses may want to come in, and it would open up the community into the school. I mean, let's set it for successful.
Anyone else?
I want to say thank you to the ONE for talking about, you know, kind of keeping our, no increase in our budget based on our taxes this year. I understand, you know, prices are going up, but I can't blow on a pay raise for myself, so our government shouldn't be voting on pay raises for nonprofits. Don't have to say it like that. The Policy Committee has once adjourned policies about bullying and psychobullying and student discipline. It's good to see that these matters are being addressed, as we are stating for a while. We believe that Daniel Moon area school district has a bullying problem and not more than a racist problem. While the school board is reviewing these policies, I hope that in these discussions, the entire issue is being addressed. Is there anything being done at Daniel Moon to address the concerns that are being brought by the students that have come before the board over the last several months? How are the incidents of bullying and racial problems being addressed? What kind of racial incidences, incidents in bullying are occurring at Daniel Moon? And has been asked before if there's a lot of incidents that were reported? Are your actions taken in response to the incident, and the end result? We do need, we do not need the names, but I would like to see what is actually occurring at the school and what is being done. Also, is this problem one directional? What I mean is the problem of white students being the aggressor and students of color being the victims? Are the reports of the situations being reversed? Are there instances of students of color being the aggressor and the white students are not reporting it? I have been made aware recently of several instances where a student of color was aggressive toward a white student, and a white student did not report it for fear of being raped or racist. I know of one instance where my son had a black student reach into his pocket to get his wallet, so he could have money to buy cookies. While I may have been intended to be funny, my son was very upset by this. Our teacher witnessed the incident and did nothing about it. There are other stories that I'm hearing now that the school year has come to an end. There is definitely a problem at Daniel Moon area school district, but as we've stated before, it's not a racial issue, it's equal language, it's true. While the leadership at the school are tasked with making the school safe for our children, I feel they are failing. I know that there's a response to lawsuits that are filed in the NAACP, putting pressure on the school district. Are we now overcompensating to detriment of our students? Like I said before, all students should be treated equally regardless of race, gender, or religious status.
Anyone else?
Does this figures, that's what you might want to turn to look at, or maybe not, it's probably, it's too late to know.
Price is a big regards to consultation. Since you all voted for price coming in because there was such a large difference in pricing over seven years, I guess you failed to look at the past ten years. When Klein and Newroad, according to your figures posted on your budget, on your page, each year, over ten years, for the last ten years, they were under budget, one million, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. I guess no one took that into consideration. Also, on the little board page that you did, just wondering why price was one hundred and seventy-eight days, and Newroad's decline was one hundred and eighty days? That must have been a big difference in the context. Also, as the contract said, for seven years, there's only six years listed here, so where is the seventh year? And if you would take those, those four buses, oh, they were, they ran sixty-five buses. Newroad and Klein made sixty-five buses, not sixty-nine. So you're going to be paying thirty-five percent for four additional buses. Just a few things that I wanted to comment out, and also, the source of tax increase. I'm a senior, I am homeowner, homeowner, and I cannot afford any difference whatsoever, as I'm sure most seniors and other families or children, most of them cannot afford an increase at all.
Good job. Thank you. Anyone else? What's Marky B's? So you have finally posted the numbers. I have a question. Why is price only one hundred and seventy-eight days? And Daniel Moon is one hundred and eighty days? Do you know what that leads up to? I mean, I did the numbers. It's, uh, sixty-three thousand for the first year, for those, only those two days, first year, second year. It's fifty thousand seven hundred and thirty-five point seventy for the third year, uh, fifty thousand seven hundred and seventy-six point twenty, that is the fourth year, and the fifth year is forty-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-five point eighty, fifth year. Sixth year is fifty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-three point thirty-five for the sixth year. We're missing the seventh year, but you're missing two days. Do you know what that comes up to? If you add that all up, and then add that in, mm, I have it here. So, pretty much, um, price was, if, if we're gonna go about this, price was, Klein's and Road's would have been maybe eighty thousand over six years, not including the seventh year, six years that you put in. Um, and then the, the new buses, so they revised the RFP that you put out, they come to buses, brand-new buses, and if those new buses, you're gonna get what? It's right here. So, for the first three years, I want to expect fifty buses, brand-new. So, this way, this whole district gets what? Four million one hundred and ninety-two dollars and four million, yeah, four one nine two eight three zero, okay? After that, they have to get new buses, yeah. This three years goes into tier two. Now, the second, um, contract that they revise, it says no older than three years. So, the first year, if they come in with those fifty or even half of it, twenty-five buses, that are three years old, right away, next year, it's gonna fall into tier two. Tier two, that's, that's a three million dollar difference per bus. Did you all do your homework? Because according to you, you said administration wants what they want, and they will, they will push what they, they want. Yes, Cooper, yes, Haynes, all of you, I know it. So, did, did all of you do your homework? Not free, you're moving. I'm not saying that, but you're moving, and you're not gonna have to deal with all this. I heard you were gonna do some bad...
Wait, get done with your three minutes, and then...
But, so I'm just saying, though, that's a big difference. If, if they're compensing something, and after they get this contract, they get come out to be like, "Oh, well, we can't find those buses."
Time's up.
What's gonna happen? They're just gonna, you're just gonna have to work with them. I don't think no one did their homework and administration hold the way they wanted to pull. And I contacted Senator, and I talked to her today. Hopefully, everything's on point. You good? Okay, so, let me just say a couple things before we move on, just because two different people mentioned the same thing. Um, the, um, the reason that those calculations that, that I did, so, I, I can feel, I feel for Ms. Haynes right now, to have people questioning the numbers that they put together, because that's usually happened to me, because I don't usually have to provide them, and so, so I, I, I feel for you not saying something most of the time, you're trying to break your strength. Um, but, um, the reason that the, the price bid was done over one hundred and seventy-eight days, because that's what their, that's what their proposal was for. They wanted a, they wanted, they said that, that, um, they wanted, they, they were asking to be compensated for a maximum of one hundred and seventy-eight days, and, and Klein, New Roads and Klein were asking for compensation for, um, for, for, for one hundred and eighty days was the minimum. And that's why, I, I, that's why, that's why that contributed to the fact that price's bid was lower than New Roads and Klein. Didn't make the whole difference, but that's what, that's what the bid was for. And second of all, the reason that I did the comparison over six years is because the New Roads and Klein bid was for six years, and I didn't think it was fair to take it out to seven years when there was no contract proposal from New Roads and Klein for the seventh year.
Because you didn't ask for it. You never had five years. They gave you five years.
So, that's why I did the, that's why I did it over, you asked me a question, and I told you the reason.
Really, seven, seven made the numbers for this event, so it was actually no big deal.
If you had, if I had extended the comparison out to seven years, it would have, it would have been even more, there would have been even more savings of, of price over New Roads, but we didn't have a contract for that second, seventh year, so that's why I didn't put it in the comparison. I did the calculations. So... I, I'm sorry, ma'am, but, but those calculations are correct.
And your...
And can I have anyone else would like to make any comments this time?
You might, the administration might be told to be doing what they want, actually be doing.
You said that. Anyone else? Hi?
So, I know we started off, uh, with Markle, across to first, uh, uh, for any such terms, but, um, I completely appreciate, appreciate all of you, and I just really thank you for everything, and wish you a nice second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, we're out of time.
No, no, you're not throwing it.
I'm not throwing it. Oh, Jimmy's out there.
I've been coming for a long time, August. I just...
It'll be here.
Not here, almost, every day. I don't, I don't miss a meeting.
Have the celebration on.
Even I missed a meeting.
I know, I know. I'm just gonna kinda, that's kinda like reiterate the whole, you know, school board year, and, you know, like Gretchen said, you know, we came here, and we were pretty rude to you guys, you know, maybe not as rude as some people were, you know, attacking people's families and things like that, you know, hit the bell. I mean, we probably would have done that, you know, maybe if we had that sort of information. I'll just be honest, you know, I mean, not that it's cool that I used to talk like that, but we were pissed off, you know, you see things like that, but just hear me out, just hear me out. But as we got to know each other, you know, we, we learned that, you know, you guys are highly located in what you can, cannot do. I learned that, um, when we were complaining about certain things, how certain people were guiding your judgment, you know, whether it was lawsuits, kinda people saying that you were doing lawsuits for certain things, and it was like, okay, someone's telling someone one thing, and maybe then fear, it's not their fault, you know? And this is all about masks, um, what we're talking about. You know, when dirty people, when they came out to fight masks, maybe, um, uh, people didn't care, or maybe he didn't care, and this, that, and the other. You know, we were fighting for the children, number one, and, uh, you know, as a school and all, and, you know, now we're fighting for the, uh, the programs that are being run into the school. And, you know, then even, you know, we bring up how the programs are affecting the kids, and, you know, we're going through these, uh, roundtables, and we're hearing the information that's being sent to us. We bring it up at the board meeting, and there's quite a few of us that are, like these, you know, putting our time in, listening to these roundtables, and hearing the information they're saying, and we're like scratching our head with things, and we bring it to the board with your attention, and then all of a sudden, out of the woodwork, you got the students coming out, and they, they were coming out strong, and how they carry themselves to you guys and for the board, that's the stuff that we're talking about, how they're, what they're being taught in school, or what they're not being taught in school, and how they're not being corrected, and things like that. And, you know, they're coming out of the week, and they're doing the same thing, yada, 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 they're not, you know, with their own information, or given this kind of complaint about how the school is unsafe, and things like that. I mean, you just kinda say, well, because they're bullied, you know, that's usually why they're not, not going for the seat, because you're giving them bullying in school. You know, then you go on and on, um, then the real point was with the buses too. As I was listening to the bus thing, I remember when I, for my company, the same thing happened to me or my job, where another company was gonna come in, and they put an RFP in, and my company, they failed to put up, together a, a RFP, you know, because they felt that we were there for forty years, not me personally, I was there ten or forty years, and they felt that they had to put an RFP in, or they were playing with the things, and I'm not trying to say that's what happened, you know, I'm just, just listening from my perspective of things. And, you know, the only people that really, um, have a bit of praise from that decision was, you know, people, I know, I know, just, I, I need to, I need to finish up this, was we, um, managed their property, not, not so much the body of people. So, I mean, keep up complaining about this, you know, the buses and worrying about the students, but, you know, I'm sitting here saying, like, let it, let it see how it happens, it's not affecting the students yet, everyone's putting this thing, saying, it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen, you know, but it might not happen. You know, I mean, it could be fine, they, they, these, uh, people, the bus drivers could work for the next company, they're not going to lose their job unless they choose to lose their job, you know, I mean, it's our thing. So, I'm just off the side.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Anybody else?
Oh, and I want you guys to have a nice summer too. You guys are awesome.
You too.
No matter what we said, you guys are awesome. We'll fight again whenever something's going, but we'll just, like...
Can't wait.
Happy anniversary.
It's not yet, two more months.
Definitely.
Anybody else have something they wanna say?
I'll bring you a cake.
All right, seeing none. I have an announcement to make. I'm canceling July's meeting. I wasn't gonna come anyway. We, we had a discussion, and, uh, um, we, we are gonna have to have a special voting meeting first in August. We, we've, we've placed our, our most, you know, we placed our, um, new assistant principal at the high school, um, that was the one I was most worried about, and so we will have to have a special voting meeting at the beginning of August, because we still have some vacancies, um, to fill before school starts, um, and we gotta get those voted on before school starts, because, as you do. And, um, but we're not gonna have a meeting in Ju- July, um, because, um, um, you know, regardless of, um, what Ms. Markle and Jimmy said, you know, we need a break, we could use one, but, but, um, you know, I do appreciate everybody who comes to these meetings, I, you know, I have that conversation with you a lot, I know that some of you believe me, um, but I, I hope that you understand that even if we don't agree, um, I think that the back and forth that we have makes things better, not worse. Um, because, uh, you know, especially for those of us like me, who, whose, uh, students are, are done now as of last year, um, it helps me to, um, know what folks that, whose kids are still going through the school process, going through, going through the grades, knowing, um, what's happening on the ground, it helps me to, to know what parents are concerned enough about to give up their every other Monday to come here and talk to us, so. Um, with that, if you have a meet, a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Uh, second. We are adjourned. Everybody have a great summer, I'll see you in August.